So you might have been speeding on your way out.
Not bad.
I for one was not speeding, Sheriff Cruz. It was more due to the white car in front of me that was going fifty and it seemed like there was always no passing, but...
Might not hurt to put an officer out on a couple of these roads every...
We're good to go.
I ain't going the long way around from Kimball. All right, we're ready to roll. If we could all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everybody. This time we would have a public comment period. And those of you who are wishing to talk for the cannabis or the alternative elect energy, we are going to have a segment later on in the board meeting to do that. So with that said, any other public comments? With that said, looking for a motion for the agenda.
Mr. Chair, we had one addition after the initial agenda initially came out, and that was the Cedar Mills Lion Club gambling application.
All right, thank you, Andrew.
Mr. Chair, I would move the agenda as amended.
Okay, motion made by Johnson.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Schmidt. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on, consent agenda. Andrew?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have the approval of the July sixteenth board meeting minutes, approval of the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable, appointment of Catherine Fenrick to the Public Health Advisory Board, approval of out-of-state travel and training for detectives looks and case, approval of tobacco license transfer for the Eden Valley properties to Albright Liquor, a resolution twenty twenty-four fourteen, the Cedar Mills Lions Club offsite gambling application, acceptance of the donated C D three watercraft cleaning unit for aquatic invasive species, approval of the grant agreement with Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs, and that is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Anybody, since there's a resolution in there, we'll hold that off. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda.
Our seasoned veteran gets the nod. Beth, looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Julie. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I do have a question, Mr. Chair. On the payables, Andrew, was that Climate Makers seventy thousand? Was that part of the construction or was that part of a repair?
I believe, not the repair, that's the planned replacement of the unit downstairs.
Okay, and then the other one that was kind of standing out there by itself, I couldn't tie anything to, was Phobia Electric. Is that part of the...
Phobia Electric is part of the remodel project.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, with that said, do we want to do the resolution first for Cedar Mills or is that all?
You can do it all as omnibus, you just have to do it as a roll call vote.
Okay, all right, let's do a roll call vote for the consent agenda.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes. All right, with that said, consent agenda passed. Moving on, Jason. Arzvold?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
I can run through it or you can click through it as well.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Sure.
Sure. Okay, well, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. My name's Jason Arzvold. I'm with Ellers and Associates. We have been working with the city of Litchfield to help bring forward a housing project in the community that has a financing gap. So as one of the ways to help solve that financing gap, in addition to grants and some consideration for the land, we've been working with preparation of a tax increment financing district. And what we have brought forward is a district called four dash thirteen. It's for the Midtown Lofts project. I'm going to talk a little bit about the project, a little bit about the TIF plan itself, why the project needs tax increment financing, and what we're requesting of the county board today. This is a little different kind of tax increment financing district, which I'll talk about, because it requires actually the county to act. Now, you haven't had to do that on past tax increment financing districts because the statute doesn't ask for that. But with the expanded authority that the legislator granted, legislature granted several years ago to provide some economic development district help for housing that doesn't have income restrictions, they added a provision that provides for that. But in that recognizing that they were expanding the TIF law, I wanted to include that both the county board and the school board would have to then approve those particular kinds of new districts that can be used. So that's the why part, that's why we're here. The project itself, you may be already familiar with it, but it's been dubbed Midtown Loft. It's sixty units of market rate rental housing. The reason why this project didn't go into a regular housing TIF district is because those require income and rent, well, income restrictions and typically what goes along with that is rent restrictions. That's not the market that this project's trying to hit. It's trying to hit a market that will serve folks that work in the community that are probably above those income limitations. And so that's the reason why this district type was chosen. The location of the project is at four fifteen Ramsey Avenue. It's going to cost almost twelve million dollars to construct. And again, why, the reason why we're here is because the project has a financing gap. What that simply means is that the cost to build new rental housing is more than can be supported with the rents in the community. And that's been a dynamic that's been in existence for many, many years. We've worked with the city on multiple occasions to look at bringing new housing to the community and not just in Litchfield, but across the state really. And this is the case where just, you know, building new rental housing is too costly. So it doesn't happen unless there's some ability to provide some level of other kind of assistance. And so part of that in this case is coming from this TIF district. It's about six hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. It would amount to nine years of payments from that TIF district. It's based on an analysis that was conducted, and we'll talk about that some future. Did go into this request to verify that there is indeed this financing gap. And again, as I mentioned, there's other funding coming into this project because it couldn't be done just with the tax increment financing. There's consideration on the land that's being conveyed and also a grant from Minnesota Housing who runs a program specifically for this type of housing. It's called their workforce housing grant program, and they provide grants in recognition of the fact that housing is just too costly to build in greater Minnesota. And they provide millions of dollars every year specifically for projects like this. So what's been done to date, just so you're aware, the council on April fifteenth took a few actions. One was to approve a preliminary P U D for the project. That's sort of the initial planning approvals that they needed to go through there. At that same evening, there was a term sheet that was approved about the level and type of tax increment financing assistance. So that was a, you know, preliminary indication of the city's support to use the tool of tax increment financing, and they voted to do that unanimously. And then the city has been working with the developer to submit the grant application, as I mentioned, to Minnesota Housing, and that's in progress as well. Final P U D approval is planned for August nineteenth. That also happens to be when the city will consider all the final actions related to the tax increment district as well. So the item before you tonight is actually considering approval of the TIF plan. And that's what is required for this particular type of district. The plan document you have, what is the plan? It's really just, it's really just that. It is the document that sets forth the policy objectives for the project. It's a plan document. The document itself and the plan itself do not grant any assistance, you know, to a developer at all. That's done separately through a tax increment agreement that the city will enter into with the developer. The plan itself that you have before you talks about the geographic location. So we talked about that, the address. It includes numbers, there's numbers in there. There are dollars in there, but it's a maximum budgetary authority that the city will be able to collect within that district. They can't exceed that. And again, as I said, it's really just the city's planning document to operate the TIF district, not to actually provide assistance to the developer. There are a few other items within that plan, things that it contains. I'm just summarizing them, and I'd be happy to go into any more detail, but for the sake of time, I'm just going to be brief here. Talks about the location, so the district will be four fifteen Ramsey Avenue, and then any rights of way that surround that. As I mentioned, it's established as an economic development tax increment financing district, and there's a little subheading under that. That's typically done for manufacturing, warehousing, distribution-type facilities. But there is, as I said, the legislature allowed for a carve-out to do workforce housing, recognizing that it's really an economic development effort that's being undertaken to provide housing for local employers. And in order to qualify then, this plan also has to meet a couple of other requirements. One being its location in greater Minnesota, so it meets that. You have to find that vacancy within a fifteen-mile radius of the site has been less than three percent over the past two years. So there's a market study essentially in the appendix of the plan that you have that documents the fact that that is indeed the case here and that there are, that there is support from local employers that indicate that housing is a barrier to attracting new folks to work within the city. And there are, I think, five letters as an appendix of that plan from various employers within the community that indicate that that is the case. And then, as I mentioned, one more, you know, step that has to be, or hurdle that has to be cleared here to be able to create this district is that both the county board and the school board need to approve the plan as well. And so that's just done by resolution, which we'll talk about. And then when the district is created, the tax increment that within the plan can be used to pay for certain eligible project costs, so that's primarily going to be, you know, site improvements and things of that nature, generally sort of the ground level and below-type things that they'll be reimbursed for relative to that. And as I mentioned, this kind of district carries within a nine-year maximum duration. So that's the longest duration that it can go. That's what's currently anticipated. Then after that nine years, it comes out of the district and that tax base isn't available to the city, county, and school for general, you know, general purposes. It's probably a good point to stop and just maybe mention that, you know, you don't see a lot of these, right, as a county board to come before you for approval? This, the plan is being set up so that, as I mentioned, it has this maximum budget. That cannot be exceeded. The numbers in the plan are higher than what the anticipated assistance is here. And that's, again, it's on purpose to provide for flexibility within that plan because if you exceed that, it becomes a challenge and problematic to deal with. So it may not spend up to that dollar amount, but the authorization is up to that dollar amount. The way that this will work is that there is the value that's there today. There is a value, I know it's exempt property, but there's value that's there today that is on the books. And so that's supposed to be the base value. Those taxes will continue to go to all the jurisdictions. There's no negative impact to the county here with, by virtue of having created this district, there's no ongoing financial obligation on the part of the county as a part of this, no potential financial obligation, and there's no other administrative requirement that the county's going to have to work with. So once set up, would function just like any other tax increment district in the county, won't have any need to deal with it on a going-forward basis. The payments to the developer, again, are going to be what we call pay-as-you-go. So the city is not coming up with dollars upfront. The developer has to go out and finance a hundred percent of the costs. And then what happens is that they get reimbursed if the tax increment becomes available to them over that nine-year period of time. If it's for whatever reason short, or there isn't enough increment in a given year, you know, they just get the payment that is available, and if it doesn't get repaid at the end, nobody's obligated. The city's not obligated, taxpayers aren't obligated. That's just the developer's risk if that was to happen. The plan builds in ten percent allowance for city administrative costs. So there are some, the city will have ongoing administrative costs. There's annual reporting to the office of the state auditor. There's annual calculations of the payments that are made to the developer and then monitoring the development agreement. They can use some of the money in the district to help cover the expenses that they incur with that. And as I mentioned, the base value taxes will be paid to all of the taxing jurisdictions. So when that comes in the district, it's the county assessor is supposed to put a base value that's taxable on the property, and that we've already factored in that that won't be captured as increment. So there'll be some new taxes immediately coming from that parcel that aren't captured as increment. And then the new value from the building will be captured as increment within the district. And one question we often get is, well, we're giving away these taxes for nine years. Why would we do that? And I guess the answer to that is that because without this assistance to this project, it would never move forward. And that's what we call meeting the butt-for test. And we go through, you know, analysis around that to confirm that that is indeed the case. That's done with a review of the project's financing and all of its projections on a going-forward basis. So we've conducted what we call a pro forma analysis, which is to confirm that that butt-for test is indeed the case. We took, Ellers took that project and looked at all of the costs, projected expenses, how it's being financed, what are their projected market rents, and confirmed that all of those things conform with what we would expect to see with a project like this, that nothing is being overstated, that they're not, you know, showing more need than would be necessary. And our conclusion from that is that this project does require additional assistance in order for it to actually be built and for it to be financially feasible. And so our analysis supported the notion that the grant was necessary, the write-down of the cost of the land was necessary, and that the tax increment financing was necessary to make this project financially feasible. So once we've looked at all of those expenses and determined, you know, that they are acceptable, then we also look forward to say, well, what is the developer going to earn as a return on investment in this project? Because ultimately, that's what is important, right? If they're going to earn too much money, or, well, they can earn as much as they want, but if they're asking for public assistance, we tend to say that that shouldn't exceed certain thresholds. And one of those thresholds that we use is what is that return on the equity investment that they make in the project? And we would generally say that if that's exceeding ten percent, then the project doesn't need assistance. And this project, over the nine years, was well below that without any assistance at all. Once we layer all of the assistance that I talked about in there, their average return on their equity over that nine-year period of time, as we calculated, is about eight point eight percent. So that's still even, and then at that nine years, the assistance stops. And so our conclusion there was that even with all of these sources of funding, that the return on investment to the developer is still below kind of typical market and therefore justifies the notion that the assistance could be provided. So that goes to the conclusion that, you know, look, if the assistance isn't there, the project doesn't get built, the taxes aren't available to anybody, the county, the school, or the city. But in this case, if it does get built, the taxes get redirected for a nine-year period of time. And then when it's done, there is a more valuable asset there that is taxable on a going-forward basis. So with that, the requested action of the county today is just that, as I mentioned, this particular district type does require that the county affirmatively approve the plan. That's just done by a resolution that will be made a part of the transcript that is available when we go to actually certify this tax increment financing district. And so what's before you today is a resolution that does just that. It would authorize approval of the TIF plan, consistent with everything that we just talked about today. And then in terms of next steps, there are all, this whole month, there's a whole series of actions that have to happen, kind of kicking off with this one. But next Monday, both the Planning Commission will review the TIF plan. That's just a step that's required as part of the process. But also the school board will hear the same presentation about the plan and about what's being asked of them. And they wanted to have an opportunity to have a work session around that. So that's what that day is for them to ask more questions. The nineteenth, Litchfield, the city council will hold a public hearing actually approving the TIF plan and then that TIF agreement that I mentioned. So this plan does not direct any assistance to the developer. It just helps to create the district. As I said, the city will have a separate agreement with the developer that says how and when they will receive those pay-as-you-go tax increment payments. And then on the twenty-sixth, the school board will actually act to consider the approval of the TIF district, much like you all are doing today. And then assuming all of that occurs and we get everything put into place, the developer intends to start construction roughly in the October timeframe of this year. So with that, I'll stop. I know it was a lot, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have or go into more detail about any of it.
Okay, any questions for Jason?
He went through those forty-nine pages that we got in the board packet pretty fast.
In about, yeah, five minutes.
I have, I have some questions. What, what, if I'm understanding this right, a TIF district, you talk about a TIF district. What area does that cover? Is it just this project or is it a whole section of the city? I need that explained.
Great question, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. So it's, in this case, this district will be one single parcel, and it'll only cover the area that this project is being built within. So that's it, just one parcel in this case.
Okay.
It can be, other districts, if you've seen, can be multiple parcels or larger areas, but that's not what's intended in this case.
Is this the only TIF district that will be in Meeker County?
No.
At this, at this point?
No, there's several TIF districts in Meeker County. I don't know what they all are. I have to get you that last.
And when we say a TIF district, if I'm understanding this, it's a nine-year forgiveness of taxes?
Not a forgiveness, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. It's actually how it'll work, just kind of mechanically, is that the developer will have to pay their taxes every year, just like they normally would, the full amount. Those taxes will be segregated by the county when they're received as tax increment, which is then delivered to the city. And then the city will use those redirected dollars to make payments to the developer under its TIF agreement with the developer, provided they have met all of their requirements in their agreement and continue to be in compliance with all the things that they need to do. Then, so that's how it happens. It's sort of, I'll call it a reimbursement instead of a forgiveness.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the city, the county, and the school district, the property will pay their taxes for these nine years, and then that money is divvied out. But does this mean that the school district, the county, and the city will then not receive their tax payment for nine years? I'm concerned about the school district. Are they then going to be giving up tax dollars on this piece of property for nine years?
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yeah, that's a good question. The school is funded on a formula basis, so they're not going to lose any money at all in this transaction or be harmed financially at all, just like the county. It is true that when the project gets built and those taxes are paid, they do not go to the general taxing authorities, right? They go and they're captured in this district. But it goes back to that point that I was trying to make, which is that, you know, without this assistance, the project doesn't get built at all. And the taxes from that parcel right now are zero dollars. And so they would continue to be zero dollars, and so nobody would still be getting any taxes. The idea here is that you're redirecting those taxes for a nine-year period of time so that the project can get built and that when it's out, you then have that new value there, roughly nine million dollars of assessed tax value that is available to help having built the tax base. So the idea is long-term tax base growth and the housing product at the end. But yes, in that nine-year period of time, when those taxes are paid, they will not go to those jurisdictions. That's right.
Mr. Chair, but Jason, that's with the exception of the already existing base.
Well, correct. There will be, there's two things. That's a good, there will be base value. There will be now a base value that gets placed on that property. It's exempt property right now. It's pay zero. It'll pay something. Land value taxes, those should go to all the taxing jurisdictions. The other tax that isn't captured as increment are market value taxes. So any taxes that are part of a voter-approved referenda, those do not get captured as increments. So those would continue to go to the school, for example, for any voter-approved referenda that's out there. Those will do that. So they would actually gain in that sense the school. And potentially, there are some two-bedroom units here, even with the formula that they have on a per-people basis, the potential for children in the school that could be added as well. We don't know for sure, obviously, what the tenant makeup is going to be, but that's a possibility.
I know when we, first of all, negotiated the sale of this piece of property for this project, that I was excited to find that it would be going back on the tax rolls, of course, because now it's sitting there. So that was a push for my decision on this piece of property. And then now to hear that there's going to be a nine-year out, that concerns me a little bit, but I'm trying to comprehend all the various avenues that funds will be redirected for. Those were my questions.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I just, just a clarification on, it's just the type of district. Normally, we wouldn't be involved in this conversation as a county board, the city, because lots of cities within the county have their own TIF districts that operate. So it's just the type of district this is that kind of brought us into this conversation, if you will?
Exactly. This is the only kind of district in statute that requires both county board and school board approval. And for perspective, if it's helpful, I mean, it's often common that we would, so a housing district, for example, is a twenty-six-year maximum duration. So just for perspective, and then redevelopment district, twenty-six-year maximum duration. So for nine, nine years is actually a, I know it's a long time, but I mean, it's a relatively short time in the world of putting new housing in a community to get that to happen. So, but yes, that's exactly it. It's the only type. Unless there's, sometimes when there's special legislation for a district, the legislature includes a provision that requires the county board and the school board to, you know, accept a city's special legislation for an existing district, for example. That's the only other example that I can think of.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Move to approve a resolution approving the city of Litchfield establishment of tax increment financing district number four dash thirteen and adopting a tax increment financing plan.
Motion made by Johnson, looking for a second.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Second by Olberg. Any further discussion? With that said, can we have a roll call, Corey?
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes. That says, resolution passes. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Right now, I'd like to recess the county board and convene as a county ditch authority. Barbara Locke, property records, taxation, and elections manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you have a request to take out loans and also pay back a few ditch loans, we have done the May settlement and found that we could do payments for three of our ditch systems to reduce that liability to the general fund on County Ditch Forty-one, Joint Ditch Two, and Joint Ditch Fifty-two. And along with my request is to also take new loans for work that's been done on County Fifteen-Sixteen, the Renville-McLeod Meeker J D one and the Meeker-Candy Renville J D one, and asking for loans on them. I did propose the three percent interest. That's what we did earlier this year on one, and I'm not sure if that's favorable, but that was the proposal, the motion request.
Thanks, Barb. Any questions for Barb on this?
Mr. Chair, we did the three percent, just to be fair, because we were treating all ditches basically the same that way.
We've been pretty consistent on that.
Consistent.
So all of the loans that we have currently in place, with the exception of Joint Ditch Two, Fifty-two, which was longer ago, but that was also a joint system, is that two percent. All the others that I have currently are three.
And I was looking at this yesterday. Fifty-two started out at a very high number, as you recall. That was my very first ditch.
Baptism by fire, yeah.
And, but we have paid that down significantly.
Right. We had, fortunately also, we had a large sale, and we do ask for the assessment to be paid in full when a sale happens. So they have a ten-year period to pay, but because of that larger sale, we brought it down quicker. But I think we're at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand at this point. And then, of course, now I'm asking for sixteen to take away from that.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve transferring funds from ditch fund to revenue fund to retire loans for County Ditch Forty-one, County Forty-one, Joint Two, and Joint Fifty-two in the amount of thirty-two thousand plus interest of two, twenty-two hundred, twenty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents, calculated through July thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Do you want me to keep going?
Either way.
Can we do them both at the same time?
I'll do them both.
Move to approve transferring funds to ditch fund from the revenue fund to provide loans for County Ditch Fifteen and Sixteen, Joint Ditch One, which is Renville-McLeod Meeker, and Joint Ditch One must be Meeker-Renville?
Or Candy-Renville.
Candy-Renville, at three percent interest rate.
All right, motion, long motion made by Steve, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Second by Julie. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thanks, Barb.
Thank you.
And then just to, I had to text Andrew and find out what those abbreviations were. I knew I should know them, but I couldn't remember.
Well, now adjourned from the county ditch authority and reconvene for county board. And next up, Paul Bukovich on teams. Take away, Paul.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to attend this meeting virtually. The two orders of business that I have for you are positions that we're looking to post this year. The first position is a social worker working with our CFSS program as well as CADDY program. working with our CFSS program as well as CATTI program. CFSS is a new program. It is replacing our PCA program, which we have 42 cases. We're looking to see that that's going to cover about 50% of the FTE for that. We're also looking to move 15 to 20 CATTI cases that are currently managed by our CATTI waiver team and our DD waiver team. These caseloads are extremely high at this point, given that we're seeing a number of new increases or a number of increases in access to long-term care and these programs. We're looking to also address the capacity to serve those new cases. Currently, we have two DD cases that are also serving our vulnerable adult investigation and our vulnerable adult program areas. And we're seeing an increase in our vulnerable adult reports over the course of the last couple of years. And so we're seeing kind of a big push in access to a number of service areas that we believe that this position will be able to support and serve. This position is 100% funded by CFSS as well as the CATTI waiver funding program. Do you want me to just do both of these positions and, and do your approval together? Or do you want to do them individually?
Well, we'll, we'll just do one at a time then, Paul. So we'll just focus on the social worker. Any questions for Paul on the social worker?
My question, this is not a replacement. This is adding a staff member. Is that correct?
It, it is adding a new staff person, yes.
So how many social workers do we have currently, you know?
Oh, goodness, you're, uh...
You can send it.
Right off the top of my head, I think we're right at about 20.
And that has grown how much in the last couple of years?
Uh, we have grown by six in the last five years.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Paul, this was one of the ones that you presented to the personnel committee, correct? But it's for the 25 budget, but it's, it's here now to get, get started on.
Uh, well, this one, yeah, we, we were unfortunately unable to budget for this because of the rollout process that we had from DHS regarding the CFSS program, which is intended to start October 1st. So this is the reason why we're asking to fill that in our 24 budget. We did budget for it in 25. But considering that it is a funded position, we don't see that there's going to be a significant negative impact on our budget for 24.
Mr. Chair, in the personnel meeting, we did move this forward as a recommended position.
Okay. Duly noted.
So, Mr. Chair, my only concern is in, I know it's fully funded. We hear that, but we're still, and I'm not, I'm going to vote for it, but I get concerned as the staff numbers grow and grow and grow in many areas, like are we not meeting the need? Is there more need out there? Are we, you know? I just, when the funding stops, what happens? It's the usual questions I ask to know available when, when we hire a new person, so that's all.
Commissioner Oberg, if I need...
I don't expect a response unless you want to, Paul, but I'm just...
Uh, well, you know, your, your, your commentary is duly noted, and that is always a concern, for sure. You know, we don't want to grow just because we were intending to grow. What we're seeing is a significant increase in long-term care services throughout the agency from our initial entry in our income maintenance area, and that moves forward through our waivered services program. So this is a response to increased growth, meaning we have folks that are accessing our services more, along with trying to alleviate some of the burden in our vulnerable adult protection area, which we've seen some significant growth in as well. I wish I could attend to the root causes of that. There are many. Unfortunately, that's outside of our purview. We're just trying to make sure that we're able to serve those folks and, and keep our community members in our community.
And I understand that. I just wish we would find a new way of doing business as these things keep growing, so. I'm, I'm betting over.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the hire of a social worker for the CFSS and CATTI programs.
All right. Motion made by Paul, looking for a second.
I'll second then.
Second by Julie. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, health educator?
Uh, yes. Thank you so much. The next position that I have before you is for a healthcare educator. This position is intended to, to work and evaluate wellness programs that are identified in our opioid settlement as well as our suicide prevention grant. We did apply for and receive a four-year, $400,000 suicide prevention grant from the Minnesota Department of Health. The initial position was intended to, when we did the initial application, we intended to use one of our current healthcare educators. But due to the business load of that current healthcare educator, it's not able to attend to the grant as much as we believe that it should. We also have opioid settlement dollars that are directed by our depart, public health department that are currently needing to be implemented and put into play to serve our community. The intent of this position is to continue to coordinate with all of the various entities that are serving and working with mental health concerns and as well as opioid addiction concerns. There's a lot of overlap between those two populations. This position is funded through our suicide prevention grant. And so we're looking to start doing that work. Our suicide prevention grant, we're starting to receive those funds now. And we're recognizing the amount of work that needs to be put into place to start working with creating a community response to mental health concerns, opioid concerns, and those sorts of things that we're seeing as, as an increase in our community again. Commissioner Oberg, this is one of those attempts for us to start swimming upstream to get to some of those root causes that could potentially have a deeper end impact on our community. We're looking for some more coordination with our school districts as well because they really have their finger on the pulse of our community with both families and children. So this again is a pretty solid funding mechanism with the suicide prevention grant. As I said, that there is a four-years worth of funding there. And our opioid grant is coming out of opioid settlement dollars that we received. On an aside, we, when we applied for this grant, we initially did not receive this. And we did seek support for a number of the type of activities that we're intending to do to support our community addressing mental health concerns through Prime West. So we did receive a Prime West reinvestment grant as well. So we're still working on those activities kind of as a stopgap using those funds until we can get enough person power to be able to start really engaging the components of the suicide prevention activities that we're partnering with the Minnesota Department of Health on.
Question, Mr. And Paul, kind of a two-part question. This also was one that you brought for the 2025 budget, and we discussed in personnel, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Then on that suicide prevention grant, is that a use-or-lose type grant? If we don't use the money, we just, or is that just paid to us in a lump sum?
Uh, it's going to be paid out in a quarterly manner. So we use it and then we seek reimbursement. The challenge that we have is that if we don't have enough person power, we're not going to be able to meet the base components of that grant. And so then we would likely back away from that grant.
Thank you. Good point.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So we have a health educator that works with me from McLeod and Sibley, our community health service, correct?
Correct.
And we, we're not, they're, they do not have the capability to do this, too? Is that what I'm understanding from this?
Correct. Given, given the duties...
We share that now, correct?
Correct. We share that position with the community health, the CHS. And so the duties that that position currently has basically fills up the full position. As we look at these other duties to support mental health in our community, we've been piecing this together with different staff, i.e. leadership team. But given the components of their positions and the requirements of those positions, we can't really keep shaving that time from the supervisors to do this work. And we're also looking at a healthcare assessment coming up, a CHA, as well as a healthcare plan. And Chakuma, our healthcare educator, is going to be doing a lot of that work. In conversation with our healthcare educator, Chakuma, as well as our leadership, looking at this position is going to help strengthen our overall public health response in some of those shared areas with the CHS. Because there's going to be work done in the mental health area by our health, by this position, that will be able to be utilized by the CHS. If you look at the CHS, all of their healthcare plans for the last few years have indicated a strong mental health component and a need to educate the public as well as coordinate public response to mental health. So this really kind of fits well with what I believe the CHS is intending to do. We just have the grant funds to be able to do that work. The intent of the grant is to work on a system of creating a, a, a community response to mental health and opioid concerns that can be replicated and shared with other jurisdictions. And so we see that what we use this position for as a support for some of the efforts that the CHS may be doing based on what we've looked at in their previous plans. And I'm assuming that mental health will continue to be a component of their healthcare assessment because it is such an integral issue for our communities that we serve.
Well, it's certainly been on forefront for a few years. My other question is, Andrew, maybe, refresh my memory on how much the opioid settlement was?
So it's, it's kind of a shifty number. What I can say is right now, we have over a quarter million dollars in the bank.
And I believe when we learned that we were getting that, that there was a committee set up.
Yes, so...
I think I was on it.
We, we had, we had initial discussions about wanting to do prevention work, and we shifted those responsibilities over to the Meeker Area Partners in Prevention. And, you know, as Paul has mentioned, the, the amount of time that Chakuma has had available to him to focus on that has...
Getting back to the opioid settlement, so we made that decision, and now there is no more committee then? The money is, because I don't recall a meeting. I just recall the opioid settlement coming and...
We, we had a meeting where, as a group, we discussed wanting to focus our efforts on preventative efforts.
Okay. So now we're going to take 25% of that for this four-year grant and add to this four-year grant? Am I understanding that?
That is what's being proposed.
Okay.
Not 25% of the total dollars, 25% of the time.
Right. Sorry, I worded that wrong.
Yes.
So in four years, when the grant is up, what are we going to do with this health?
Our, our funding source for the, the opioids goes well beyond four years. It's an 18-year program that we're going to be getting money for.
But, but one of the things that I'm concerned with is, again, we're hiring staff. But our, our goal was prevention. So here again, we hire a staff member, and we're going to have meetings, and we're going to do all. But I want to see some results from this money, and that's what we talked about. So this, this is my concern. We just keep adding people and adding people. Do you see my concern?
I, I agree with you completely.
Okay.
And, and my, my argument would be that without the staff to be able to do the work, there's no outcome that we can get.
So that, so we can't have meetings with the people we have? We have, can't have public forums? We can't have people that need to go into treatment? I can think of, which is why I think we formed a committee at the time. But I can think of lots of ways that we can use some of this money. And I, again, I will vote for this, but I am just getting, like, every, we just keep adding staff with no result. I don't mean that, no offense to staff, I'm, it's fine, Paul. I don't want to get in a debate about it. That's my feeling. And I hope when we start using this opioid funding, this isn't all it goes for.
No, not at all.
Because, you know, there might be somebody on the street that comes and says, "I really need to go to Teen Challenge for a year, but I can't afford it." So let's take some of that money and do something with it that maybe in the long run is going to make a difference.
And, and I 100% agree with you that that's the intent of the funds, and that's what we want to use them for. We're not going to just use them to, to pay for a staff member to say that they're doing work on opioid...
I mean, I look at our budget, and we're...
But, but we also do need someone who's able to focus the time to be able to do those efforts.
Then, then I hope we get some reporting back on what we prevented here because this is just building up and building up. So I'm done.
If I may just respond, just quickly...
Steve, why are you laughing at me? No, I, I, and I'll, I'll just quickly comment. I mean, through public safety and stuff, too, with the sheriffs and the, and the law enforcement, mental health is...
I understand. I'm not...
Massive undertaking. And really, it goes back, I've said this before, it goes back to 25 years ago, closing state-run hospitals, and not that everybody should be institutionalized.
Right.
But we, we left a huge gap in the system. We didn't have an answer for it.
And I understand that, but since I'm, since I'm the seasoned commissioner, not to interrupt you, but mental health, on our first community assessment, when I went to group meetings, was on there. I can tell you what's going to be on the next one. If we don't start to make some changes, just hiring staff isn't an answer for me anymore. That's all.
And Commissioner Oberg, what I'm hearing from you is what you would like to hear more from staff is the work that we're doing.
Well, and some results. I would like to see some outcomes.
For sure. Absolutely. So we'll, we'll bring Department heads in here to talk to you more about that.
So today, Personnel Committee, you've approved two new hires with...
Yes, we did.
All right.
We've recommended, yes.
Okay.
And I would just say that it's, this process, unfortunately, are good, depending on how you look at it, is the process the state has given us to answer some of the...
I understand. But we do have that settlement.
Which is probably cumbersome and not pleasant.
But we do have a settlement that I would like to see and use more.
Yeah. Your points are valid. I mean, I...
And, and I can say that this, the settlement itself has been a focus that I had with our previous public health director and now with Paul. And what are we doing with the money? How are we going to use it? How are we going to help the community? And it, it's something that, you know, Paul can attest to. I regularly talk about with him, and the challenge has been that we don't have the capacity to focus on.
All right. Good.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment about that, too. I know I was at the meeting, too, Paul, and, and this was for a four-year position. And I always wonder, do these positions ever get reevaluated then after the four-year? And I brought this up at our meeting, and I said, "It just seems that we hire someone, we spend a lot of the grant dollars on benefits, wages, providing an office, equipment." And I am in agreement with Beth. I'd like to see more of the actual outcomes. What is happening? We're spending this much for salary and benefits. And, and I, I realize that if we don't have the person to administer the program, it won't get done. But I, and is this strictly for Meeker County? Or is this a position where we're going to share with Sibley and McLeod? Is this strictly a Meeker County position?
If I may, may respond, I think the, the conversation that, that we're, I'm hearing from you folks is, is spot on. One of the thing, to simply answer your question, Commissioner Bredesen, this is a specific to Meeker County position. The grant funds are specific to Meeker County, and our opioid settlement dollars are specific to Meeker County. Our intent is to do this work here locally. One of the, the nice things that I, I think that Commissioner Oberg said is that we need to start showing some results for this work. The position that we're looking at, as well as the opioid dollars and the suicide prevention grant, as well as the Prime West dollars, we are building an accountability into what we're doing, basically saying, we need to have evidence-based practices. So we need to... So we need to capture the data. And we have a number of partnerships that are supporting us in capturing that data. We have Woodland Centers that has a lot of encounter data that we're looking at, as well as PACT for Families, has a lot of encounter data that we're looking at. We're starting to open up some of our relationships with the hospital, which we're very blessed to have a county-owned hospital that will also be able to have the data. So the intent of this position is to really build that understanding of what is actually occurring in our community and what interventions are actually being successful in reducing that mental health component. Now, we don't have full control over the ideology of our community for mental health, but we're really trying to move towards swimming upstream, which has a better prognosis. The earlier we intervene with folks, we can statistically show that the odds of individuals going into deeper end care, i.e. commitments which have a direct levy impact, or some of our adult protection issues, as well as our child protection issues, which have deep-end levy impact, which are very difficult interventions for people and families to be involved in, has a benefit. But we have to capture the data. And that's one of the things that is a key component of this position and these grants is to ensure that we're able to report back to you as decision-makers exactly what is occurring in real world, real terms, not just anecdotal type information.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Paul on this one? With that, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the hiring of the health educator.
Motion made by Steve, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Julie. Any further discussions on this one? With that said, all those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for allowing me to visit with you virtually. I really appreciate that. Have a great day, folks. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Paul. Next up, Greg Schultz. And just to kind of outline things for the next thing, I have a little thing here that Andrew wrote out for me. He's like my county wife, telling me what to say.
When to say it.
And when to say it. All right.
More importantly, want not to say.
Yeah, well, that never helps with me, so. All right. Today's public hearing is in regards to the proposed moratorium on the operation of cannabis businesses. The proposed moratorium would take, would place a hold on zoning applications for these businesses while the planning commission works to complete its recommendations for the updates to the county's zoning regulations or until January 1 of 2024, '25, whichever comes first. This would not prohibit the future development of cannabis businesses, but ensure the reasonable regulations are in place to protect the interests of the community and to promote the public health, safety, and welfare. We'll take this matter in the following order. First, Greg will provide a brief overview of the proposed ordinance. Then we'll seek comment from the public. And finally, we'll close the public hearing, and I will seek comments from my fellow commissioners. As a reminder, during the public hearing, we request that anyone choosing to speak limit their comments to three minutes, remain respectful, and keep their comments to the issue at hand. Before making your comments, please state your name and address for the record. Finally, the purpose of the hearing is for the commissioners to hear your comments and is not intended to be a dialogue. We may not respond directly to your comments or questions. After the conclusion of the public hearing, the county board may choose to adopt the proposed ordinance, reject the proposed ordinance, table it for a future date, or table it with direction to amend the language in the ordinance. With that said, Greg, take it away.
Sorry, we're on the cannabis. Sorry. I went too far ahead there. That's my fault.
Yeah, I think I said cannabis in there, didn't I?
There we are. I clicked one too many times.
You got nervous when you mentioned his name.
First item here would be the public hearing for approval of interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on operations of cannabis businesses in Meeker County. In 2023, Minnesota State Legislature Session Bill was passed into the law legalizing the use of cannabis by persons 21 years of age or older. 23 cannabis legislation law allows Minnesota counties to adopt reasonable restrictions on time, place, and manner of the operation of cannabis businesses. This passed May 24, 2024. Governor Walson signed a cannabis bill allowing for the cultivation to start as early as this year. What that has done is that cannabis cultivation, taking applications right now on a, what they call social equity plan for early cultivations, what they're taking. And those applications are open until, I believe, August 12. And after that, September and October, they're going to go through a lottery on who's applied. And with that, they're going to be giving out about 200 and some licenses to start early cannabis cultivation. And with that, it's kind of spirited, not only our county, but other counties in acting moratoriums to kind of stop that process. And whatever else comes down the pipe, so. So the county board, you have the option of a lot of emergency moratorium, which would prohibit the operation of any cannabis-related business, not just cultivation. Could be manufacturing, could be delivering, could be warehouse. And there's your option today, and it's before the board. In case there's some other thing that happens between now and January 1 of '25, that would kind of put us in the planning commission and our ordinances because we won't be ready until probably November, Decemberish to have our final ordinances in place. If anything would come down the pipe, this moratorium would stop or give us the ability to stop applications for these types of businesses to come into the county.
Okay, thanks, Greg. At this time, I look for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved by Johnson, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Julie. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. At this time, if you have any, anybody in the public have any comments, you can come forward. Looks like none. We'll move to close a public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, public hearing is closed. Now, looking for any comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I just have, so this includes growing it at home also? Or just, no, so they can do that? So this is just?
Anything with license that's taken in.
Growing it in an agricultural setting, licensing for selling, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm hoping or assuming this probably won't take till next January to get solved, right? Or it does?
Gives us the time, yeah, I don't...
Ultimately, we have, we ultimately have five months now to go through our, the planning commission process. They've already been talking about this for a while.
Right.
But they're going to need some time to develop what the ordinance looks like, hold their public hearing.
Because I've gotten some calls about people that want to obviously sell it, right? So they want to know.
And the state has not yet opened up the retail licenses, which will likely not happen until, what they've indicated, probably second quarter of next year.
Really?
So.
So they passed the law, and they really weren't ready.
Well, they had to, yeah, no, you're right. The state had to stand up a separate agency for all of this work and set rules.
And didn't they hire a CEO and get rid of the CEO?
That occurred as well. And so they're working through their process, but they're anticipating that retail licenses were probably ready to go. What I heard recently was probably second quarter.
But it doesn't affect anybody at home that might, but the same rules for the Clean Air Act are in place for the cannabis, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, just to remind everyone, the planning commission only meets once a month.
Right.
So five months may sound like a long time, but...
No, but I, we've been talking, I'm just saying, we've been talking about it a while, and now we're looking at January of '25, which, that's fine. Thank you.
I have a question. How will this affect current businesses? I go to various communities, drive down Main Street, Litchfield, and we see current businesses that are open. How will this affect them?
Well, they best not be selling cannabis.
We have the license in place, they're already grandfathered in for this one.
And this is also only for businesses within our planning jurisdiction.
Right.
So City of Litchfield, this does not apply to. City of Dassel does not apply to any of the cities in the county that we don't do zoning for, does not apply to. But if a business in, say, Manana, which we do do planning for, wanted to start to sell cannabis or grow cannabis, they wouldn't be able to get a registration from us or go through a zoning process with us.
The only place I've seen being sold is, I don't know, reservations. I think they started right away.
Have we seen at the planning and zoning any inquiries about it? I mean, just coming in and getting job calls? There has been.
That's what I've gotten to us from calls.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just, I think the best plan is the state likes to get the cart way ahead of the horse, and they don't really... So it's navigating through how at a county level we're going to be affected by future things that are decided at the state
Yeah.
that they didn't have figured out yet. So that's kind of been the process through this whole thing.
And then they have someone else to blame it on too, don't they, Steve?
Well, and then we'd have to go back and adjust or change things that we already did that, but now be in conflict, so it's just good procedure.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Good planning.
Sheriff Cruz is here. Has the sheriff's office seen, since the legalization, have you seen an increase in calls concerning cannabis?
Yes.
Okay, significant?
And we're still, there's still restrictions, so we're still seeing it in vehicles. It's not supposed to be in vehicles. We're still seeing DUIs, which take longer because you got to do a blood test. It didn't decrease anyway. It's still there.
Thank you.
Question. I am hopeful that the zoning board will partner with our law enforcement people as they make some decisions about this and our public health. I serve on the Meeker County Public Health Board, and there has been some discussion as to how things will come together with regulations for Meeker County. And I'm definitely hopeful that the zoning board will partner with the other entities within the county when they start to discuss this during the moratorium. Thank you.
Yep. I know I have complete faith in the zoning board. So looking for, with that, are we looking for a motion on this ordinance?
Mr. Chair, move to approve an interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis business in Meeker County.
Motion made by Johnson, looking for a second.
Schmidt will second.
Schmidt seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Next up will be the solar discussion. Before we go into that, Greg, I have a little statement too. I'd like to first thank all the planning commission for all their hard work. They have been reviewing potential changes to our zoning ordinances related to solar, wind, and energy storage facilities since the county board held a week, a work session, discussion in September of last year. I know they reviewed a number of written materials as shown in attachments in our packet and have weighed comments from the public and industry representatives and considered the requirements in other counties' ordinances. This group of volunteers has put in a lot of time into the recommendations that they bring us today. As an outline of how we will move forward, first, Greg will provide an overview of the recommended amendments to the ordinance. Then we'll seek comment from public, if there are any. As we have a number of recommended amendments before us, I will seek a motion on the entire package of the ordinance amendments. We will then open it up to the discussion by commissioners. And if there is a desire to amend any of the recommendations, we'll consider motions to do that. Since these are recommendations by the planning commission following a public hearing, any amendments to their recommendations require four votes to be approved. As a reminder, as we seek comments from the public, the planning commission has held the public hearing on this issue and have received summary of those comments. The county board encourages feedback from the public on the issues of our agenda. However, per our policy, it is the direction of the board chair to allow comments on the agenda items. So if you would like to make any comments, please limit your time to three minutes, remain respectful, keep comments to the issue at hand, as with previous public hearings. The purpose is for the commissioners to hear your comments and is not intended to be dialogue. We may not respond directly to your comments and questions. After discussion today, the county board may choose to adopt the proposed ordinance amendments, reject them, table them for future, or remand the proposed ordinance amendments back to the planning commission for further consideration. With that, Greg, can you kind of give us a little overview of everything?
Yeah, if you remember, back in January of '24, we put a public hearing regarding a proposed moratorium on solar and wind. Basically, that was, if you look at the mapping up there, that was basically because of transmission line possibly coming through Meeker County in a large wind project that was proposed, or we got inquiries about a large wind project in the southwest, part of the county. With that, we adopted a moratorium on large solar and wind systems. Planning commission has been evaluating potential changes since that time. Had the public hearing last month on this. You look at the map on the right-hand side, that's existing infrastructure already in place in like a lot of the solar projects and wind projects. And coming to the county are kind of tied into that right now, currently. So that's where the map comes from. This is your, not only did we deal with the solar and wind, we also got into energy storage too, which we got in in a couple of months. There's been some inquiries, I believe, in Reddville Counties, Reddville County and some other counties about energy storage systems. So we looked at that aspect of this as well, which we hadn't thought of before the moratorium. So I think it's good that we're going to include that in the amendments as well because these are large systems capable of very large storage of large quantities of energy. I think it's something that has to be dealt with as well because the solar and wind systems is as well.
Greg, I'm sorry, I'm struggling a little to hear you.
Okay.
As the chair says, I'm seasoned, so I don't hear as much.
Did I say that? I don't recall that.
So as well as the wind and solar, we also are incorporating energy storage systems into these setbacks and restrictions as well. That's something when the energy is stored throughout the day into a battery system, basically a big battery system, that can be pushed into the infrastructure for later use down the road. That's something we initially did look at, but as we found out more about it, we decided to put some type of restrictions on setbacks on that, on those systems as well.
So that's a battery?
Yeah, those big containers are basically battery systems, yes. For storing solar or wind. We use it later time. So from the public hearing, I'll see a number of people that had shown an interest in this. Majority were for, you know, were for the systems as they were in place with little restrictions, and a few people had wanted more restrictions in place. If you get that from the RBA, I think I provided you with that information. Actual amendments that are on the board are, most of our amendments are due to setbacks. The first section we went into, we changed our small systems from DC rated of 100 kilowatts or greater to an AC rated capacity to 300 kilowatts or greater. The reasoning behind that was to deal with, basically with like dairy operations, farmer operations, things like that, that could power their own systems, but yet not have to jump through the hoops of a large system. They could still sell back some, but not much. Most of the, most of the systems under that will be used for in-house consumption of the power of the properties. So that's why we moved it up from 100 kilowatts to 300 kilowatts. Next section, section two, section 22.24.1C. We had allowed them in the R1, R2 zone previously. Now we're not going to allow them in the R1, R2 zone. Most of these zones are... R-one, R-two zone. Most of these zones are basically around lakes, um, in the county, we thought. Um, the board thought that probably not wise to have large systems in shoreline districts or close to, or other development type of zones with high population of residents in them. We are going to still allow them on the small, small scale with a permit and if they're less than forty kilowatts. Reasoning for that is most households use less than forty kilowatts of power on a daily basis. We also did that, requiring them to be placed on buildings to not have, necessarily have trackers in these, uh, on these yards. Again, for kind of protecting those in the shoreline district, probably more than anybody else. Next item was, uh, was the waiver. That back, previously we had seven hundred and fifty feet for non-owner residence for large solar systems. We moved that up to thirteen hundred and twenty feet, non-owner residence. By private owner, thirteen hundred and twenty-four as well, with many systems greater than three hundred kilowatts. Now with this, they can get a waiver. The property owner agrees to be within that thirteen hundred and twenty, either that non-owner residence, they can get a waiver from them. That's what we had in place before as well, seven hundred and fifty. Reasoning for this is that because of our, we went to thirteen twenty, which is very similar to our feedlot ordinance. Class B systems, class A is thirteen hundred and twenty feet as well. Big gravel pits, um, two minus plants, things like that are a quarter mile away as well in our ordinance. So we kind of followed that suit. And the next time, uh, one thing that is different is that we're not going to allow, without, without some type of variance, is any system, even if you're an owner residence within two hundred feet of the residence. The idea the board was at for safety reasons. Because there's a fire at the facility, because it's somewhat of a buffer. So it's two hundred feet is the minimum distance. Now, any large system be permitted, even on an owner residence. Next one is fencing setbacks from private and township roads are a hundred and fifty feet, two hundred feet, stated in state roads. This is up from our hundred foot for township roads, a hundred and thirty feet from our, our county state roads and two hundred feet from our state roads. Reasoning on this one is because these systems are large. They're not like a building, our building setbacks are anywhere from a hundred to two hundred feet. These are a lot larger than that, figured in county, especially on township roads for safety, having people being able to, in the intersections and coming up on intersections have a little more of a buffer when they come up on an intersection. Setbacks from side rear property lines, minimum thirty feet. Setbacks from drainage, dishes, wetlands, minimum fifty feet. And that follows our building, um, structure setbacks and ditches and wetlands currently we have in place. The next. This thing, this section twenty-two point twenty-three point one, E-ten is a brand new one, is that the planning commission really wanted to limit the amount of total lands that could be used for solar in particular. So they put a, they put a maximum limit of ten percent per owner, per township in the A-one district to be used. It's roughly about twenty-three hundred acres per township. That can be some solar energy. And the idea of that is to protect agglance from being agriculture, not everything being gobbled up by possibly large solar systems. So. Next one is a new one, is substations and transformers. If you hadn't had the ordinance before, that's going to have to meet the same setback as a non-owner residence for solar farms and services. Next one, we go into the wind energy, wind energy, non-commercial WCS, went from seven hundred and fifty feet to a thousand foot setback. Commercial WCS, one hundred point one thousand feet to thirteen hundred and twenty foot minimum to, uh, be in similar to what solar systems are as well. And that's for non-owner residence. We don't have the waiver, um, option for, for the wind, wind turbines. Next one is we changed, uh, section F to be accessory facilities, minimum setback then shall be determined. Um, in the permitting process, and that would be any outbuildings or anything like that, something that services these, these, uh, the wind systems. That has to be the minimum setback standards to be determined by the planning commission. And again, substations, transformers, that service wind turbine systems have to meet the same setbacks as the wind turbines as well. An all-new section is the energy storage systems. And this is for, uh, systems with related, related, rated cap- capacity of greater than forty kilowatts or greater. And a conditional use permit is going to be required for these systems. They will, will be prohibited in the district, won't be allowed for anything greater than forty KW. An energy storage system has, uh, which is something we hadn't thought about, is a, our definition is commercially, commercially available technology that uses mechanical, chemical, thermal processes, store energy, including energy generated from renewable resources and energy that would otherwise be wasted, and deliver the stored energy for use at a later time, or stores thermal energy for district use for heating and cooling later time in a manner that reduces demand for electricity at a later time and is compared composed of stationary equipment if late, if being used for electric grid benefits, is operation visible and capable of being controlled by the distribution or transmission entity managing it to enable and optimize the safe and reliable operation of electric systems. So with that, our permit procedures are going to be, um, very similar to other permitting we have for building and land use as well. We're going to have to have a site plan. You see there, existing conditions, existing property lines, boundaries, public, private roads are going to have to be on a location size of abandoned wells, sewage treatment systems, existing buildings, impervious surface, um, topography of two-foot intervals, waterways, delineated wetland boundaries, hundred floodplains, floodways, flood fringes, surface water drainage patterns, site plan and proposed conditions, be the location of energy storage system, location of access roads, plan location of unknown overhead electric lines, new electric equipment, proposed stormwater management, plan shall address road maintenance during and after completion of construction onsite. This is very similar to what happens when we do like feedlot permitting, other building permits and stuff like that. So it's a new, new aspect of that. So, next. Description, next. You're going to have to prove or what, how the connection is going to be made from the array, the building or the substation. Copy of interconnection agreement, which is required for our solar and wind, um, projects. Energy storage is going to have to have that same interconnection agreement. And a decommissioning plan should be required to ensure facilities are properly removed after their useful life. And that's very similar to our solar and wind projects right now. Other requirements, um, adequate design must provide local, not only show that all state and federal requirements for these systems have been met. Um, safety design standards, engineering, certified engineering required. The next one would be, must meet the same setbacks as large solar wind energy system, local. One thing we, we discussed a bit was that local EMS must have adequate information supporting how to handle medical environment or fire emergencies at these systems. This is something that has come up in other communities. When you put these in, local EMS does not know how to support or how to handle an emergency at these types of systems because there is so much power that's stored at these facilities. So we're going to put that requirement in place as well. And, uh, we also might require heavy metal sampling for recurrent metals at these locations as well. So. All the ordinance changes for the solar wind and energy storage ordinances that the planning commission came up at the moratorium.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. At this time, I'd seek any comments from the public if they'd like ask any question, or not questions, but make statements. If none, I'd like to look for a motion from the board to approve the amendments.
Before we do that?
No, I'd like to make a motion from the board to approve amendments. Uh, we're going to do parliament, parliament procedure in this one.
You're seeking amendments?
No.
Seeking a motion from the board to approve the amendments.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the recommended changes and additions to the solar, wind, and energy storage systems Meeker County ordinances from the July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four Planning Commission meeting.
Motion made by Johnson. Looking for a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Steve. Any further discussion?
I just, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question for Greg. The decommissioning bond, refresh my memory on how much that is.
It is, right now it's fifty dollars per solar panel we have.
Is that what it's going to stay be?
No, we couldn't move that at will.
It's always a concern down the road, the de- I'm worried that something else is going to come along and then here we're going to sit and then they're going to, so I do think that.
Previous one from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, that came through, twenty-five thousand dollars.
We may want them to consider having more of a bond.
And I tried to, uh, I tried to, you know, what decommission could possibly.
Okay.
Right now it's about thirty-five bucks a panel.
Okay.
I think to recycle. That's what it seems to be. Right now we have fifty.
I'll just, I think that's just something to consider. Thank you, thank you, Mr.
Mr. Chair, as a reminder, the decommissioning, we conclude as a condition. And so it's something we can adjust for each project as it goes, so we don't have to go back and do an ordinance.
Good, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew. In there also, we do accept a bond, but we have the option of having them escrow the money with the county.
Some counties have chosen to go that route.
Yes, and I believe Lyon County was one of the ones we spoke with. And that was something they do. So, but we have not.
I think that's a future, that's something we have to look forward to the future. We won't be here, but, you know, so we have something. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Question about the decommissioning. Do we also require that on large other facilities such as livestock where there's lots and lots of cement and wells and structures? Do we require any decommissioning with those entities?
We do not.
We do not?
Wells have, wells would have. That's the state's law. You have to cap wells and stuff.
If there is a well on the property.
But we don't require a fund. Yeah, but it's not, it's not a county issue. It's a, it's a state.
So, so with those, with those entities, you don't collect funds upfront and then hold it in escrow until?
No.
Until the facility.
Only thing we hold in escrow is for septic systems on, on properties that have been sold. We'll hold money in escrow until the system, septic system has been upgraded to code. At that time, you have a year to upgrade them. That's the only thing we hold. We don't hold the money. The company or the firm here will hold the money. We require that to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I, I do have some information that I'd like to share before we take a final vote on this.
And you also have the, the option to, uh, ask for a motion to amend, uh, to any of these things.
Thank you, thank you. Um, for my colleagues and those in attendance, I have been attending several of the zoning meetings and I attended the public forum on July twenty-third. Eighty-seven percent of the speakers that night asked for reasoning for these extreme restrictions that would limit the rights of so many county residents. Not a single zoning committee member spoke up to represent the overwhelming public support for solar and wind that was presented that night at the open forum. Despite this public show of support, the zoning committee passed several new extreme restrictions that will basically eliminate any small property owner from developing a solar site of more than two and a half acres. The previous setback for solar and wind, which Greg shared, was seven hundred and fifty feet. The new setback is one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. That's four point four football fields. That's the distance across forty acres. This restriction means that a property owner would need to own somewhere around three hundred to three hundred and sixty acres in one chunk of land with no roads, no neighboring residents, in order to accommodate this extreme restriction. I made a couple of phone calls to our neighboring county land directors. Stearns County has a two hundred foot setback. Renville County has a two hundred foot setback. Candy Ojai has a ten foot setback. Yes, I called them twice because I couldn't believe it. A ten foot setback. And now Meeker County is proposing one thousand three hundred twenty feet for a setback. Our neighboring counties are welcoming solar and wind opportunities for their tax-paying property owners. They are looking forward to the economic growth that renewable energy businesses will be bringing to their communities. I'm not in favor of, of these new restrictions because I feel, what message are we sending to our tax-paying property owners who I feel, no matter what kind of land they have, whether it's agriculture land, it is the owner's choice. This limiting the percentage per, per township is, we are applying controls to people who pay taxes and should have the right to do at their property what they wish. We, my colleagues, as government leaders, should be welcoming businesses. We should be providing opportunities for our residents, our tax-paying property owners. We should not be restricting them to the point where they cannot use their land the way they want to. It should be an owner's choice. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to amend this document to strike one thousand three hundred twenty foot setback and replace with the original seven hundred fifty foot setback for a non-owner resident. Thank you.
Motion to amend made by Julie. Looking for a second. One more time for a second, or otherwise the, uh, motion dies.
Mr. Chair, as long as we're back on the main motion, I just, two comments.
Yep.
Number one, I would really like, and I know you did in your opening remarks, to thank our planning commission. This is community volunteers who come in to do the work that we ask them to do, to protect all of our county residents, all twenty-four thousand and change in numbers of our county residents. And I believe that, uh, Greg, Kim, Corey, Greg, Jesse, Derek, and John, and Greg Schultz and his staff deserve a tremendous amount of thanks for the work they did on this over the past few months. And we appreciate it. And I want to make sure that you know that we appreciate this. Then my question is to county attorney people by, you have reviewed this changes and found that they were in compliance with anything, so that we're not outside of the boundaries on anything.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I just want to jump in. I didn't have an opportunity to, I, I, I didn't have the advantage to be able to look at the setbacks for the other counties, but when I'm kind of looking at Candy Ojai County, it, it says that the fall zone is certified by a professional engineer plus ten feet or one point one times the total height. So, I don't know, I, I can't attest to whether or not that's an accurate ten feet of just straight up ten feet or if there's more to it. So I just caution that I don't have the opportunity to verify if that's completely accurate, but just thought that it was important for this board to know that as well. And in addition, I did consult with Greg as these recommendations were coming forward. You know, I challenged, why are you coming up with this? He gave the reasoning much as he gave today. And so with the recommendations to these amendments, I am, um, confident that these, um, would pass muster. And I, I'm not concerned about. I, I'm not concerned about this board accepting these recommendations.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I've just a couple of comments. Um, I too, I received a couple of calls, um, and I, I passed them along to Greg Janz at, uh, at the fair the other day, just that, and these folks are pretty adamant in their position with solar and wind, uh, prior to this, and they followed some of the planning commission's, uh, guidelines or the, the procedures through here, I don't know if they were at a lot of the meetings or not, but they've been studying it. And I know a couple of, or one of them stopped in to talk to you a couple of different times. But anyway, two different individuals both said that, I just want to say, planning, zoning, did their homework on this. They were impressed with the job they did, so I want to pass that along. As far as, and I'm a little, there's a couple of questions I have for Commissioner Bredesen, just to the point. You mentioned eighty-seven percent of the folks in the planning commission meeting on July twenty-third.
Yes.
Were, were proponents?
They were in favor of solar and wind, not opposed to solar and wind. They were opposed to the new restrictions.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, my, my concern is eighty-seven percent of what number?
There were fifteen people, and Greg has included in his report some of the comments that were shared.
And I read that, I read the report. And my, my concern is that fifteen people does not represent the county as a whole. So eighty-seven percent number cannot be applied to the county as a whole.
But those were the people who attended and who spoke.
Please let me finish.
Yeah.
I know we have a map, an interactive map with yellow circles on it. And all those people have a right to have their voice heard and their vote heard, heard too. And the planning commission, given the time and a couple of, I know we have a planning commission member, I believe sits on Meeker Cooperative Board. Um, so I mean, they have access to information locally, and, and so they did their homework. And, and I'm, and I, I mean, I have no reason to argue with how they came back. It's comparable to other, uh, setbacks that we have for other operations within the county. I can tell you, um, because I do have a, a one megawatt system my own, that, six years ago, that project started. And that project did not go online until January of this year. There's a project in Stearns County across county line north of me that is still in the works that started before mine. These projects don't happen fast, they take time, there are problems. XL Energy and your solar developer and the landowner are not going to trot down the street holding hands and think that there isn't going to be problems here. So I think the planning commission did a good job by setting parameters that we can ease into this over time without jumping into a project. Again, federal dollars, lots of federal dollars thrown into this, and we don't know exactly what, where it's heading yet. We're six months away before this, uh, XL Energy Transmission Line gets approved for even a route. I mean, so the moratorium to put that in place and protect the public health, the public safety, and the third leg of the stool, the public welfare, does affect the, the residents of this county. So I, I am in favor of the setbacks that are proposed and I, and I applaud the planning and zoning commission for their work. Because it is an easy work when you got people in the room that are opposed to, to what you're doing and you're, and you're basically a volunteer. You get paid a little bit, but it's, it's not worth the headache sometimes, so that's my position.
Mr. Chair. Thanks Steve.
Beth. Steve, thank you for saying that. I just want to say, I had some phone calls and an email and it was one hundred percent for the planning and zoning and what they put in place. Now, it's easy, like you said, to put a percentage out. I had one email and three phone calls, but it was a hundred percent, correct? So, I'm on your side, thank you.
It's numbers, we can use math however we want.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I am, in, in regard to your comment about a member of the zoning board who also serves on the REA board. I received my Pioneer Newsletter this week, the day after the open forum, and the particular individual who serves not only on the zoning board, also serves on the REA board. And in his bio of this past week's newsletter, he stated, "I am an advocate for solar, wind and renewable resources for electricity production." And when I read that, and I thought, not even that individual stood up during the public forum to help support those thirteen people who came and expressed their desire to have the opportunities for solar and wind production. I had, it, it has been a very frustrating, yes, thank you for those who serve. Thank you for those who serve. I totally disagree with the amount of research that was done. As I've attended these meetings, there has been no sharing of any research, anything within a peer-reviewed evaluations, nothing.
Uh, one question on that note, Julie, uh, are you for agriculture? Would you consider yourself pro-agriculture?
I am for the rights of people, and if that's a person who owns agriculture land, you, you also own agriculture land, Danny. We should be able to make our own decisions with the property that we pay taxes on.
My point is that if, even if you're pro-agriculture and we have a setback of thirteen hundred and twenty feet for feedlots, what's the difference of him saying he's pro-solar and wind if we have setbacks of thirteen hundred and twenty feet? So it's a little unfair, uh, slant at that individual. Um, as far as I go, I am for this, uh, for this, uh, amendment, as is. Um, agriculture currently for feedlots is thirteen hundred and twenty feet, same setback as that they're doing for solar and wind. We are an agriculture county, and I, I applaud the work that the planning and zoning work did. And I think the majority of the board appreciates everything they did, it's a voluntary basis. And, uh, I appreciate all the work they put into this because it's never an easy decision because when a big company comes in and throws a lot of money, not even their own, it's hard to, uh, come up with, uh, good ideas. And remember, the planning and zoning, their reason is not just to protect, it's to protect neighbors. Otherwise, there would be no planning and zoning in general. So, when they try to do this job, their job is trying to protect neighbors. So, with that said, I think Julie had an, a, a motion to amend. Uh, didn't look like there was a second, so I'm assuming that motion dies. Is there, uh, in terms of that, is there any other further discussion before we vote on this ordinance?
Do we have a motion yet?
Yes.
We do, I'm sorry, I got lost in them.
Yep.
Well, I, I just would like to apologize to all of the people within Meeker County who were hoping to use their property as they wish. I apologize to the current businesses that we have in Meeker County. Six blocks from here, we have a company that employs over a hundred people. Those people live here, own homes here, they pay taxes here, they send their children to school here. I apologize, I've, I've tried my best, I've attended the meetings, my colleagues have not. I've questioned people on the board.
All right, we need to move on, I'm sorry, I'm not going to let you slander this board.
You know, I'm, Mr. Chair. Just get a copy, all right.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have to comment on this.
How come you get to it?
Our county attorney spoke to us and recommended that it was inappropriate for us to be at planning and zoning committee meetings to try and influence their work. Our work as a board happens here when all five people are in their seats. We should not have been there, and it was inappropriate for any commissioner to be at that meeting.
I totally disagree.
Well, all five, all five can't be there.
Randy, do you have anything to say on this so we can move on?
We can't be there.
Otherwise, it's a quorum. So, well said, Paul, I, I agree with those sentiments too. With that said, I think, uh, we've had a good discussion in terms of that, uh, if you want to clarify or not.
Yes, I just want to clarify one thing about, uh, when I spoke with Greg and was going through the amendments and their recommendations, he did provide me a list of documents and literature that they used to kind of establish. It's my understanding that they actually went out to some of these sites and visually, um, saw them and heard them. And so I just would recommend, if there's any questions about what the documents and literature are, I believe they're also included in your board packet.
They're in the packet, all you have to do is click on the link.
And so, I just wanted to clarify that there was additional research that was done in, in reading and, um, communicating and speaking with outside resources. And, and then there's also keeping in mind that this is for the smaller, these are for the smaller projects. Anything huge scale is going to be out of our hands and it's going to be at the state level. And so these are just for the conditions that Meeker County can actually control for those larger scale, um, projects, though it's going to get through the state, and so just keeping that in mind as well.
Thank you.
So when it said that, you didn't see the material, it was in the packet, you just have to click on the link.
And we have opportunity to stop it, Greg, and, and because we weren't in the meeting doesn't mean we didn't do research.
Anyway.
All right, okay. With that said, if it's okay, uh, can we do just a roll call vote on this one?
Sure.
So Corey, if you want to go through the roll call on this one.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
No.
Commissioner Oberge?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. With that said, motion passes four to one. Thank you for all your work, Greg, and please pass those sentiments to the rest of the planning and zoning board from, what do we got? Oh, 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 I'm sorry, good point. Next up, good point, rescinding the, uh,
Sorry. We have a resolution rescinding the interim ordinance number twenty-two, or two, zero twenty-four dash oh-two, which is instituted an emergency moratorium on large solar energy systems and wind energy conversion systems.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to rescind interim ordinance number twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four oh-two that instituted a moratorium on large solar energy systems and wind energy conversion systems.
All right, motion made by Schmidt, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Bredesen. Corey, if you could take the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Oberge?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. With that said, resolution passes.
Mr. Chair, move to move into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero five subdivision three B, a attorney-client.
Okay, motion made by Johnson, looking for a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Schmidt. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 All right.
Can we, uh, take a five-minute break here quickly?
Five minutes?
Oh, upstairs here, right here.
Oh, one moment?
Yes. Because as we did last time, this room isn't sound secure, so.